Well, good morning. I call to order the May 5, 2022 Board of Clackamas County Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Stephen Madcor, county counsel. Tony Marnick, clerk to the board. Roll call. Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. We are beginning with public hearings. There are two public hearings today. The first, approval of a Clackamas County supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2021-2022. Sandra Montoya, our county's budget manager, will present. And she'll come right up here. One moment, please. This is a public hearing, but Sandra will give a quick presentation first.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager for Clackamas County. Before you today is an item for supplemental budget. ORS requires that a supplemental resolution before a fund or department exceeds its budget spending limits. Today, you have for your consideration $25,670,949,000 packet for supplemental requests. It covers eight different funds. Items one and two correspond to general fund, Finance Department. It is recognizing assigned beginning fund balance, and it's for the expense of financial system support. Item number three is for the county fair, and it recognizes coronavirus state fiscal recovery grant, and it has a corresponding increase. Items four, five, and eight relate to lottery fund, ARPA funding, and technology services, and it's increasing the budget authority. Item number six is for housing, health, and human services, and it's recognizing additional fed-- I'm sorry, federal and state grants to support emergency rental assistance and low-income home energy assistance program. Item number seven relates to the health center funding, and it's recognizing additional beginning fund balance, additional Medicaid revenue, and it's increasing the operating and capital outlay expenses. And with that, I will pause and allow you to ask any questions.
Thank you, Sandra. Do any Commissioners have clarifying questions or comments about the presentation of this supplemental budget? I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I see nobody in person who wants to testify on this. Tony, do we have anybody online who wants to testify on this supplemental budget?
Madam Chair, I do not have anyone preregistered. If there is anyone online who would like to speak on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the resolution adopting the supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved to approve the supplemental budget, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Sandra. The second public hearing is for the Board to consider requests for an election and final order to form a joint water and sanitary authority in Oak Lodge. Jeff Mounds, Assistant County Counsel, will give a brief presentation, and this is a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the final hearing for consideration of requests for an election and to consider the final order to form the Joint Water and Sanitary Authority for the Oak Lodge Water Services. It would create the authority and then also dissolve the current district. The new authority would be formed for July 1 of this year, but the district would be dissolved for December 31 of this year if you approve the order. The order also adopts a new name and the boundaries, these effective dates, and then instructs staff to submit the final order to Metro, the cities of Milwaukee and Gladstone, and to the Department of Revenue. It also then adopts the findings that were part of your preliminary order that you adopted on April, it was 14th, about, it was 21 days ago, and this final order has to be considered between 20 and 50 days after that initial order. So we are 21 days in compliance with the statute. To date, we've only received three emails concerning this. None of them requested an election, one in support and two in opposition.
Can you state the new name, the old name and the new name, please?
Of course. The old name is the Oak Lodge Water Services District, and the new name will be the Oak Lodge Water Services Authority.
Okay. Wonderful. Do the Commissioners have any qualifying questions on this hearing? I do have, I'll open the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I do have one blue card for somebody in the audience. That is Les Poole. Sir, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I will stun you by being done in two. Les Poole, I've lived in the county for almost 30 years and lived in Oak Lodge, was practically a neighbor of Commissioner Savis for 20 years before moving to Gladstone, and I'm, I just want to be very brief in saying that I fully support the proposal to put this on the ballot, and I'm very, very supportive of all of the effort I've seen through the years by the Water District and by the folks that have kept it autonomous, kept it as much as possible its own entity. So I'm supportive of this concept and encourage the Commission to, are you authorizing a public vote?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. Well, if I'm a little off, I apologize, but I'm certainly in support of this, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Les, for coming forward. Any other people wish to testify in the audience on this? Seeing none. Tony, do we have anybody online who wants to testify about this?
Madam Chair, I have several preregistered individuals. I will call on them, followed by anyone who has their hand raised, beginning with Neil Schulman. Mr. Schulman, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
My name is Neil Schulman. I'm the Executive Director of the North Clackamas Watersheds Council at 2416 Southeast Lake Road in Milwaukee.
Go ahead, Mr. Schulman.
Thank you. To Chair Smith and the Commission, we continue to urge the County Commission to support this transition. As I have mentioned in previous testimony, the secure, consistent boundary is a vital step toward planning for watershed protection services that are vital to the quality of life in North Clackamas County. Our area of service includes, for the watershed counseling, includes the Mulatt River, Boardman Creek, Royne Airson Creek, River Forest Creek, these are all salmon-bearing streams, and good planning is vital to our community as it grows. And the population is growing rapidly, and we believe the future of the health of this area, both economically, socially, and in terms of healthy streams, is going to be reliant on the extent to which we can integrate population growth with the needs of the natural environment. And that involves a lot of things related to water quality, stormwater, and that means retrofitting a lot of the infrastructure that was developed decades and decades, if not centuries ago, long before we knew what we know now. Oak Lodge Water Services, hopefully soon to be Oak Lodge Water Authority, is a vital partner of that, and that planning can only happen in the presence of consistent boundaries that allow for the development of good plans between Oak Lodge Water Services and the county. It occurs to me, I'm thinking about a conversation I had with Commissioner Savis not too long ago, where we were talking about how, you know, the innovative ways using things like curvius pavement, where we can integrate stormwater treatment with increased sidewalks, increased pedestrian safety, and all of that takes thought and planning, and this proposal is a critical element of that. So I am reminding, I can kind of hear my niece, my 10-year-old niece Samantha's voice in my head saying, Uncle Neil, this is a no-brainer, because I really think it is, and I urge the Commission to move it forward with no delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, who's up next?
Yes, ma'am. Next, I have Thelma Hagen-Miller. Ms. Hagen-Miller, can you please state your name and area of residence? You will have three minutes. Ms. Hagen-Miller, you are muted.
Yes, there I am. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, and Administrator Schmidt. My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller. I am a resident of the unincorporated area of North Clackamas County known as Oak Grove. I want to thank all of you for working with the Board members and staff of Oak Lodge Water Services on their process of changing from a district to an authority. You've heard me before on this. I firmly believe this change to be a good one for the future of the critical water, sewer, and surface water services in the Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge area of the county. As Neil says, this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma. Who's up next, Tony?
Next, I have Richard Nippon. Sir, I'm going to find you in the directory here real quick. There we go. Mr. Nippon, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Rich Nippon. I live at 3463, I'm sorry, 3463 Southeast McCartney Lane in Oak Grove. I have mentioned it before, but I think this is a good idea to preserve the user base that has paid for any, and has debt. If the water service were to lose customers and retain the debt, it would increase the cost for everyone involved to remain a customer. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Anybody else, Tony?
Next, I have Jolene Hammond. Ma'am, you have three minutes. Please state your name and area of residence. Ms. Hammond, if you're speaking, we are unable to hear you.
My name is Tom Hammond. I live on 5727 Southeast Viewcrest Drive in Oak Grove area, and I also support the change from the district to the authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
At this time, I do not have any other preregistered individuals. If you would like to speak on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Well, thank you, Tony. That is the end of the list. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I just want to bring my fellow Commissioners' attention to, there was some testimony provided online. It's, I believe it's all in our calendar entries, and while we've heard a great deal of testimony and support in favor of making this move, there is some testimony from Kent Squires, which is in opposition, and it raises some questions. So I'm not sure who should answer, if I can just--
Why don't you ask Jeff Mounds?
Does that sound like a good idea? Okay. One of the statements is, well, it basically says, "As someone who participated in the development advocacy of the authority legislation resulting in the current statute, I'm opposed." And then he goes down through a list of things. He says, "There is no piecemeal annexation threat to the area served by Oak Lodge Water Services, nor has there been any disputed boundary issue in more than 50 years." So I just want to make sure I understand what to be true. While there may not have been any disputed or piecemeal annexation, that doesn't mean that in the future, as the community continues to expand and there are other development pressures, that there couldn't be some incorporations or annexations. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, it's a correct assumption. I think that, you know, trying to say this hasn't happened in the past obviously doesn't predict the future in this situation, that things are changing. There is a body that is looking at governance in that area as well, and I think this is something that the Oak Lodge Water Services District has considered moving forward to ensure that they have the stability for their rate pairs in the future.
Okay. And then the other piece, it says, "Oak Lodge Water Services District," this is probably a question for Paul to answer, but you can answer this one, Paul. "Is a small district which does not have the capacity to materially either affect either the water quality or historically manage ever more strained resources. As multiple demands grow on the water resources, particularly on the Clackamas River, holistic management becomes even more imperative." So in my mind, moving from a district to an authority would enhance this capacity. That's just how I'm thinking about it, but I am interested in somebody also pining as to the rationale for this, and I--
Jeff, you want to give that a shot?
Yeah, I think the change in the entity from district to authority wouldn't have any effect on that matter. It would still operate in the same manner as it has. The change from district to an authority really has to do with these boundary changes in the future and the process that's followed. Instead of a city, if one were to be formed, being able to use one chapter of the Oregon statutes that allow them to annex, that now being changed to an authority results in the staying in Chapter 198, and those decisions coming back to this Board to determine what is in the best interest of the rate pairs within that authority. Instead of the city just saying, "We're going to take it, and we're going to operate it ourselves," it would allow for this Board to make some of those decisions of the authority, and it gives that additional level of stability, that it's not something that, you know, the city would automatically just be able to change things. That's, so the authority change wouldn't affect their ability to operate, whether a district or an authority, do the same functions they currently are.
Okay. That's really good. One other piece, the proposal for you is protectionism. There is no reason compelling otherwise to change the current status of the existing district. I know that's an opinion, not something to opine on, I'm just putting it out there to put into the public record, and I guess the allegation here, the authority creation should be reserved for entities which can advance holistic resource management. And maybe there's something with the, you know, statutory authority that allowed the creation of authorities over districts?
You know, I think that the creation of authorities over districts, from what I could tell and going through the statute and researching this for this project as well as others, it is this entity stability is the central piece in an authority versus a district. And so I think for any organization that would be more stable, any, you know, system-wide approach to accomplishing, you know, their functions would be enhanced by having this organizational stability.
Yeah.
But it has more to do with just good management on the other part of it, you know, holistic and otherwise, and that's separate from what this is. I think most importantly about this statement and the other one, we have in opposition, they didn't seek to ask for an election in writing, and that's the, that is the kind of reason for this step, this second public hearing, is that if there was opposition, they should ask for an election. That's how the statute is drafted, and we haven't received any.
Okay. Thank you.
Since you hit on the election, why are we not asking for election? What is the bar for that?
Sure. If there was 100 requests for an election in writing, then, or more, then you would set this question of formation of an authority and dissolution of the district on the ballot. Since there are none, and you've already adopted your preliminary order, then you would move forward with the final order, and that would then form the authority. And the question of the new authority's board members will be on the ballot. And those, there are some deadlines for that coming up here in May, as far as notice that our Elections Department has to send out of those open positions, and then into June, these folks will be signing up to be candidates and submitting their candidate statements and so on. So that's coming up, and that election will occur for those positions, but not the formation of the authority. That will be done in the order today if you adopt it.
And when is that election?
August 23.
So it's a special election?
Correct.
Thank you. We have two Commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Scholl, you're next.
Yes, I would like to commend the Board and staff of the Oak Lodge Water Services and all the citizens who participated in this process. It's been a long process. You've worked hard. It's been an example of responsible citizenship and effective civic action, and you have taken the action to shape the future of your community, and that's outstanding. And again, thank you to everyone who had input on this process, whether it be positive or negative. That's what is important, and thank you very much.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, thank you. Just to kind of lay out the groundwork here, in the late 1990s, I start watching and was involved to some degree as a spectator, if you will, concerned citizen about the formation of the Sunrise Water Authority and the theory behind it, and the theory behind the authority designation versus a district designation. And as the Board of County Commissioners that times met, I think as the, well, I forgot the designation, anyhow, there was a discussion, and it was approved to move forward, and basically merged three water districts at that time in order to meet the growth demands out in East Clackamas County, as well as, you know, other growth needs. Two years later, about two years afterwards, I was appointed to the Oak Lodge Water District Board in 2020, and then elected in 2021, and then two years later, elected to the Oak Lodge Sanitary District, and I served on both districts at the same time. And understand really the holistic elements about water as a resource. If we just look at it as a natural resource, and there's parts of this state and there's parts of this country that are in drought, and so water management is a, and water quality, something that we drink, something that is part of life, it's got a larger impact upon our future and our lives. So with that in mind, there's one, to Commissioner Fisher's point here, there's one sentence I want to read that resonates in the letter from one of our constituents. I'm going to read part of that paragraph. Oh, jeez. Okay, here it is. Here's what resonates. "Authority creation should be reserved for entities which can advance holistic resource management, build infrastructure capacity to serve future growth, and which maximize efficiency of service delivery to the benefit of the public." I think those are, that's what I've been trying to say since this whole effort's been put forth. I'm here today to support it, so I don't want to alarm anyone. But also, I would also say that, looking back a little bit, the merger of Oak Lodge Water and the merger of Oak Lodge Sanitary was a move towards that effort, but I really believe, again, on the stormwater side and the surface water management side, that the stewardship and the cooperation in the region needs to be greater, and I think that ideally that the Board proactively, the Oak Lodge Water Services Authority Board in the future, assuming this moves forward, takes that very seriously and does some serious master planning to look at all of those aspects in which the purpose of the authority is really for. It's not for protection. It is for the holistic resource management to meet the growth needs and all the other needs that come with it. We are in an area, the boundaries of Oak Lodge Water Service in an area where we have some serious surface water, stormwater challenges. Anyone who watched the news here just a couple of days ago saw the flooding going through Oak Lodge. It was on the news on several channels, so great video if anyone wants to watch it. But if you look at, of all of that, that little thunder burst that we had there for a couple hours, that's not, that's not, that's not rare. That happens one or two times a year. Not to that level, certainly, but there's quite a few times where we see manholes and waters and geysers going upwards in a number of situations. So lots said, I'll just, again, just say that I'm support this, but I really think that the Board in the future needs to really work hard for a surface water, stormwater master planning, and work with all the entities involved in this region in a more serious way than we have in the past. And I put some responsibility on ODOT, on our DOT. I also put that on Wes. It's in this basin in Clackamas County, I think we really need a lot more of that effort, that cooperation. So that's what I wanted to say, and I'll conclude my comments there.
Thank you. Is there any other comments to be made at this time regarding the Oak Lodge Water Authority? Jeff Mounds, do you have any concluding statements?
No, Chair. I think at this point, it's, you know, the questions have been answered. I think that we had a good discussion there. I don't have anything further to add for your consideration of the final order, but that is the next step.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for passage.
I move we approve the final order adopting the findings establishing the Oak Lodge Water Services Authority and dissolving the Oak Lodge Water Services District.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Schrader to approve the Oak Lodge Water Authority and been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners, for your good work. Thank you for the citizens of answering all of our questions and working so hard to make this happen. Madam Chair, would you like to come forward and say something? Please introduce yourself.
I just want to thank you. I want to thank Gary. I want to thank the legal staff and the Commissioners and you for moving this through, and the good advice. When you sent us back to do more in terms of outreach, that was good. We did it. So thank you very much for your help. Appreciate it.
And thank you. Go forth and prosper. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Yes, sir. Elected officials, item one, approval of April 28, 2022, business meeting minutes. This is for the Board of County Commissioners. Department of Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of rights of way easements and fee property for the South-- for the South Ivy Street pedestrian intersection improvements project and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions. Total project value is $6,397,399, of which $878,371 has been allocated to right-of-way. Funding is through the City of Canby Road Fund, Oregon Local Program Project Fund, and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a board order vacating a portion of Whipple Avenue, a local access road. Total agreement value is $3,081.43. Funding is through user fees. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to complete the walk-bike Clackamas Plan, which would update the county's pedestrian and bicycle master plans. Total grant value is $222,000, including a county match fund of $22,500. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of amendment one to contract 1868 with David Evans and Associates, Incorporated for consulting engineering services for the Canby Markham Highway Bear Creek Bridge Project due to increased scope of work. Amendment value is $230,837.15. Total agreement value is now $529,737.26. Funding is through the Oregon Local Project Program Fund and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a contract with Quincy Engineering, Incorporated for design services for the Malala River Knights Bridge Road Rehabilitation Project. Contract value is $531,983.83. Funding is through the Oregon Local Project Program Funds and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Disaster management, item one, approval of amendment three to sub-recipient agreement 32002332 with the City of Portland for fiscal year 2019 Urban Area Security Initiative Fund, extending the duration of the agreement to November 1, 2022. Total grant value remains at $387,700. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. No county general funds are involved. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a development agency.
Next is the consent agenda for the development agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of a commercial lease of development agency property to One Monarch Center Limited Liability Corporation. Total agreement value is $35,292. Funding is through rental payments. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a disposition agreement at One Monarch Center Limited Liability Corporation for the sale of development agency property. Total agreement value is $870,489 less agreed upon closing costs. Funding through payment from acquiring party. No county general funds are involved. That concludes the consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the development agency consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the development agency consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. I will now adjourn as a development agency and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. We are all ready at public communication. Wow, that went fast. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the objective or consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon by statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I have one card so far, and that person is Les Poole. Please come forward, state your area of residence, and sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning again, Les Poole. I live here in the county. Before I start, I want to mention that the highway is open above Estacada to Ripplebrook finally, and I'm sure a lot of you know that, and it's great news. Unfortunately, the campgrounds and a lot of things are shut down, and with the weather we're having, I would encourage people to stay away. There's going to be landslides over the next few days. I've spoken with the folks that have been doing the work up there, and there are still a lot of instability, so let's all be careful and be grateful that it is open to Ripplebrook. The highway ends at Ripplebrook, so Bagby and the route to Detroit is completely shut down, and it's pretty devastated. We just heard of an approval to segue to the budget and to spending for a supplemental budget adjustment. And I recently talked about the budget or overspending. And what I think is important is that, I want to clarify what I said, and that is, we had a time here where on camera unsustainable spending, unsustainable spending was approved. And ultimately, it led to, I believe, the hiring of Gary Schmidt after the finance director and Gary's predecessor both resigned. At the time, we were about $12 million bleeding, from what I understand. I use the term upside down. We can mince words, but we were upside down. And when I recently held Commissioner Fisher accountable for her votes, she responded that, "Well, we really aren't over budget." Well, sure, we can adjust budgets, and the budget and actual spending are two different things. The bottom line is that we were going upside down. My concern is that when I mark my ballot, I'm electing a Commissioner who is going to be careful in managing money. That's the most important thing you folks do, by far. And I think back to her cheerleading for the payment of Jim Bernard's ethics legal fees, $26,000. It's troubling. Now, when I'm done, I appreciate not hearing that this is some kind of a partisan or personal attack. I'm simply holding her accountable, the same way I would expect to be held accountable. So I appreciate always the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to come forward to speak at this time? I see no other blue cards in the basket, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Who do we have online?
Madam Chair, I presently have one person registered to speak, Kathy Rowe. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hello, I am Kathy Rowe. I am a citizen of Oregon City, and I am the Secretary of the Three Rivers Artists Guild. I wanted to talk today about the Clackamas County Arts Artist Alliance, and I just wanted to advocate for this organization a little bit. They are just such a vital resource for all of the local artist groups, individual artists in the county. They are just such a hub of communication between all of us in the arts community that I really don't want to see their funding cut. I want to advocate for them with the Commission. They are the first place that I look as an artist to know what's going on with other groups, to know what's going on in terms of potential funding that's coming from other places. And as an artist, it's really hard to get funding and to find patrons, and they are just the place to go for all of these resources. So that is my piece. I just wanted to advocate for them as an organization. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments on that? Okay. Tony, anybody else?
Madam Chair, I have one other registration, however, they are not physically present in Zoom at this time. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, I do not have any other hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. We will move on. Gary?
Next is county administrator update, and I always like to share good news of what's going on here in Clackamas County. First, next Monday, work begins to replace the Bear Creek Bridge southeast of Canby. This bridge provides a reliable route for vehicles and truck traffic, but it was built in 1960 and has been in need of constant repair ever since. This project is paid for entirely by state funds, I'm sorry, paid for by state funds with a match from county road funds. Later this month, work will begin to repair and stabilize South End Road in Oregon City. That road was last repaired in 2017 after heavy rains caused historic landslide activity. Two types of retaining walls designed to prevent future slides will be built. This project is paid for by federal emergency funds, also matched with county road funds. No general funds for either of these two projects. Thanks to our Department of Transportation and Development's transportation engineering team for their work on these two important projects for our county. Next, Commissioners, you are aware of our Drive to Zero campaign, which aims to reduce distracted driving on our roads. I'm happy to report that this campaign's social media marketing efforts have earned a silver award from the American Advertising Federation's Seattle chapter. That organization recognized a video our team did that encourages teenagers in Clackamas County to drive more calmly and alert by setting their phones to "do not disturb" while driving. This campaign uses humor to illustrate how our phones also enjoy taking a break from us. So turn off your phone. Teens may see these ads on billboards, social media channels near our social media channels, and on billboards near Borin, Canby, Clackamas, Damascus, Gladstone, Malala, Oregon City, and Sandy. Thank you to our traffic safety team in Transportation and Development for their good work in helping create a culture of safety for our community. Finally, Commissioners, as you know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We had a great event for several county employees yesterday in the Circle of Honor. You'll see there are signs planted in the Circle of Honor that say things such as "you matter," "don't give up," "ask for help." Commissioner Fisher was there as well, and she'll give more details during her report today. That is my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Now, we will open up to Commissioner Communication, and it looks like, Mr. Savas, you're up first.
Great. Yeah, I was kind of reflecting yesterday after our earlier work sessions, when we were talking about some projects and some guidelines, criteria for projects, and knowing about really how that affects, impacts the budgeting in the future. And budget season here upon us very soon here, about ready to late May here, last week in May, I believe, start to really roll up our sleeves and work on the budget. I think yesterday we were talking about, I was trying to insert some words for our criteria and about what's financially feasible, or making sure that financially feasible and financially sustainable are two factors into what we do. And, you know, that, I think, is still a little bit concerning, that that did not get included as of yesterday. And I reflect back to 2016 when we were doing the budget, and in 2016, there was a couple of folks on the Budget Committee, five Commissioners, five Public, I was myself and a couple other of the Public members, that had flagged the concern we had about the trend and the forecasting and some of the factors, and really saying that the forecasting suggests, from how we were calculating it, that we were really headed towards a path of non-sustainable budgeting. And that grew in the following year, and that concern grew, and then that concern grew again. And I think there was a lot of denial that that was actually the case. So we had three years, actually, where we really did not have a structurally sound, sustainable budget. And I know that staff has done a great job in, number one, coming clean with that and admitting that and rectifying that, and trying to get that back in line. But I'm, and I know that staff's done a lot of work, so kudos to staff to try to get us in this budget. And last year, trying to prepare for this budget for this year, that we would be on a sustainable path. But something's happened, and that's really inflation. And that is a greater concern that really maybe perhaps we could have calculated to some degree, but I'm just, you know, I don't know what we're going to see. I don't know what the Administrator's budget message is going to be or what the adjustments are. But I have really, really concerns, just like a lot of businesses, anyone who does a budget right now should have that as a concern, for our operating expenses are going to go up, which we have no control over. And we're on a fixed income of sorts where the property tax increase is limited to 3% plus whatever new assessed value comes online. But there's just a mathematical difficulty there that I see, and I'm not sure or confident at this point that we have accurately calibrated for that. And when we talk about future expenditures and not knowing, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't foresee it, but I think we need to make sure we have a relatively safe cushion, and a cushion in the budgeting that goes beyond contingencies or reserves. But I do know that my experience here is budgeting on the Commission and that people want to just get the budget over with. There's impatience. I think I understand that's human nature. But I'm hoping that we can actually be very thoughtful and very, I guess, practical, deliberate, and cooperative, collaborative, when we have our discussions about really that big-picture look about what we're doing before we get really into the details of the budget. I've asked to do that a couple budget cycles in the past so that we could better think, put our thinking caps on as we go forward. So I don't know how that'll go this round, but I just want to just plant that seed that I have some serious concerns about our ability to manage some of these projects and that we can't put that entire burden or responsibility on the staff, that we need to take personal responsibility for that as well. I'm going to conclude my comments there.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Scholl, you're up next.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On the Willamette Falls Project of the Consolidated Tribes of the Grand Ron, yesterday, we had the privilege to be briefed by the Tribal Council on their plans for the rebirth of the Blue Heron area of the Willamette Falls. This project is for all people, people who live here, people who will visit this part of the state in the future. And everyone can participate in the rebirth of the falls by contributing to the Willamette Falls Project effort. Please learn more at grandron.org and see how you can help. On the fentanyl awareness issue, last evening I was on a webinar hosted by KATU Channel Two on the fentanyl problem. Jennifer and John Epstein of Beaverton lost their son to fentanyl a year and a half ago, and they shared their story. Their son bought what he thought was an OxyContin pill online. It was a fake pill that was actually fentanyl. It killed him. Two out of three fatal doses in America are now caused by fentanyl. It is taking younger and younger victims. Fentanyl deaths in 15- to 24-year-olds are up three times from 2020. The idea that anyone can be in a, quote, "experimentation phase," unquote, with drugs means they are playing Russian roulette, and they will lose. Experimenting with opioids means death. Parents, talk to your kids now. On the Clackamas County Coordinating Commission, tonight at 6:45, we meet the Research Justice Institute at the Coalition of Community of Color, who is doing a study for Clackamas County, will do an update on the status of that study, and I recommend that our EID people attend that tonight. people attend that tonight. On the point in time homelessness count that's been completed, 6,633 homeless in the metro area, 5,228 of them in Monloma County, 808 in Washington County, and 597 in Clackamas County. Now, we're doing better than most, but we still have a lot of work to do. Our Clackamas County Housing Authority has put out requests for information for ideas on projects that can help us build these transitional shelters we need. We need nonprofits, churches, and businesses to help us. The Housing Authority can't do it by itself. We need your help. We need the entire community to solve this shelter problem. Please contact the Housing Authority today. On history, history is important. On this day in 1862, Mexico repelled the French forces of Napoleon, Emperor of the French, at the Battle of Puebla, a victory that symbolizes the resistance to foreign domination of the Mexican people, and they celebrate it today, Cinco de Mayo. Disfrute del día amigos mexicanos and este Cinco de Mayo. And also, on this day in 1961, kids, get this, Allen B. Shepard became the first American in space after soaring 115 miles above the earth in a spacecraft named Freedom Seven. And that started the illustrious space program, the Apollo Program, of the United States of America. Thank you, Clackamas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner Scholl, for mentioning the Grand Ron. It was a great meeting yesterday. I know that we all enjoyed that update and that we're very interested in seeing the project move forward. I'd also like to mention a few things about why this month is so important. Cinco de Mayo, of course, today, but one of the things I wanted to let people know today is that it is from May 1st to May 31st, it is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So this is the month we celebrate the history, culture, and achievements of our Asian American and Pacific Islander populations just here in the state of Oregon. And this is particularly important to me because I've mentioned this before, back in 1970, I was an American Field Service student to the Philippines. And I had a, went to a family in Miagao, Iloilo. It was a little Barrio village to the Fermandosa family that had 10 children. Well, I kept in touch with the family through the years with my sister Elena, my sister Ting, my sister Luz Coronel, and we've basically followed each other's families through the year. So this weekend, I had the opportunity to meet with my Filipino family and my sister Elena and her daughter and her grandson and her husband and the rest of the family because her son Jacob graduated from the University of Portland in engineering. And one of the reasons the family was able to come here was because of my parents, who were wonderful people, both nurses, who actually helped sponsor folks in the Filipino community to come to the United States, and that is how my family ended up here and have been contributing members to our society. So for me, on a personal level, it's pretty meaningful. And in honor of this week, I'm going to do a little segue in what I call a book talk because I think that, well, Commissioner, Tudy and I are ex-librarians, so we do the book thing. But for this month, I want to let people know, OPB has nine books to celebrate Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month for children. One of those books is Bear Came Along, and this is an award-winning Vietnamese-American illustrator, Le Yuen Pham, makes the pages of this book come alive with the sweet story about six animals who learned that adventures are better when you're working together with your friends. Sophie loves the story of animal friends who find themselves on an unlikely river adventure. The art is colorful, and Sophie loves tracing the animal friend's path along the river. This is an important book because it also won a Caldecott Medal, and in children's literature, that's the highest honor an illustrator can receive for children's art and actually with a book. So that's a pretty important one. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Lake Oswego Public Library announced that their 2022 book, and I know Commissioner Fisher knows about this, with Lake Oswego Reads, and it is their 16th annual program. And the book is How Much of These Hills Is Gold by C. Pam Zhang. So the whole month of May now in Lake Oswego is talking about the book and having opportunities to learn about Asian American cultures. But I'd like to quote the library director, Melissa Kelly, because she says this, "Zhang's stunning novel redraws the American West to center the lives of siblings Lucy and Sam, the children of Chinese immigrants. Blazing their own paths out of a childhood torn by prejudice and loss, Lucy and Sam carry forward their parents' dream to find home and belonging. Despite many heart-wrenching challenges, their strength of spirit endures. It is a powerful book that we are excited to bring to our community." So at one point, colleagues, I don't know when, because we got a lot on our table, but wouldn't it be nice if we did a Clackamas County Reads program and we talked to Eldoc and get our library directors and other folks not only to play off of just, you know, that Lake Oswego does this, but it'd be great to have a month where maybe across the county we coordinate something with our professionals in that area to basically influence, you know, literacy, have thoughtful books that we can recommend that people could lead, and maybe our local libraries can build some programming around that. So with that, that's all I have to say, folks. But I had a great weekend with my Filipino family, and it was, I just left thinking, man, I'm one lucky person. I mean, who would have known that a 16-year-old who turned 17 in the Philippines, that you would be able to forge these lifelong, you know, these lifelong, you know, commitments to people and that it would influence you in later life? So I consider myself very, very fortunate. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. As our administrator Schmidt mentioned, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and yesterday in our Circle of Honor, community members and staff gathered to talk about mental health awareness and to plant some signs in our Circle of Honor. Just want to mention some key points. People often don't recognize that mental health and mental illness are as common as physical illness. So one in five adults struggle with mental illness, one in six, oh, you can hold that for a second. I'm going to come back to that. I'll cue you, Tony. Thank you.
That's a great photo.
But it's distracting, so. Thank you, Chair Smith. That one in six youth experience mental illness every year. The, what we do here in Clackamas County, we have a lot of efforts in prevention, in suicide prevention, in providing mental health services. We have a crisis line, and I encourage all of my commissioners and all members in the public to put that crisis line in our phones because if there is ever an issue of somebody struggling with a mental health crisis, we can call it. And I don't know, Tony, if you have that number, I can give it. I should have it memorized, but we can give that number in a minute. You can actually add a person in a call to the crisis line. And, and Tudy, Chair Smith has it, it is 503-655-8585. Yeah, I could have looked in my phone, too. I don't know why.
That's okay.
I was multitasking. Thank you, Chair Smith. We're a team, right? Our campaign of asking the question is key to reaching out and getting help. And when you see that, that frame of ask the question, you might say, well, what is that? What is asking the question? What does that mean? What question? What are we supposed to ask? And quite simply, what we do through Clackamas County is we train, we provide training, it's called Mental Health First Aid, and we teach people through role modeling and practice how to ask the question. And the question is simple. It's how are you? And it's really waiting for the response, and the response, really asking for, and digging in a little deeper for the genuine answer of how someone is. And if they're not doing okay, then going a little deeper and potentially using this support of our crisis line to get people the support they need. And that is the first step in preventing suicide. Other resources we have in Clackamas County, we have just, I think it's state-of-the-art. And before I was a commissioner, I did a law, I did family law attorney, utilized this resource. It is our Clackamas Mental Health Walk-In Center. It really helps people on the spot, triages and get people to the support they need. We have that service here in Clackamas County. Very, very important. So, mental health awareness, really critical. While a person may feel in the moment that they are really, really struggling, by knowing that they're not alone, by connecting with others, by taking, getting connected to the resources we have, it can, it can provide that connection and that support. So if you see someone struggling, don't hesitate to, to connect them, to be real in that moment, to ask the question and to get the support that they need. Also to mention, which is important, today is, and I'm going to pull this up here, it is Indigenous Person's, Missing Persons Day on May 5th today. And this is a very important day. It's May 5th that is this day, and I want to just talk a little bit about it. It's a day that we call on all Americans and ask all levels of government to support tribal governments and tribal communities' efforts to increase awareness on the issue of missing or murdered Indigenous persons through appropriate programs and activities. For generations, Indigenous persons, including American Indians, Alaskan natives, and Native Hawaiians, have been forced to mourn a missing or murdered loved one without the answers and support they deserve. On Missing or Murdered Indigenous Persons Awareness Day, we remember these victims and their families and commit to working with tribal nations and native communities to achieve justice and healing. So today is a day that we wear red. I'm wearing red today in honor of this day, and it is to call back the spirits of the missing and murdered Indigenous people. And red also symbolizes the lifeblood and the connection that lives within all of us. So this effort has, our Oregon attorney for, US Attorney issued a report which characterized this issue, how it affects Oregon. There are different data sources that are out there, but it looks like there are 13 individuals missing and three murdered from the Oregon State Police that we are tracking. The Oregon State Police issued an awareness recently for a woman as part of the Warne Confederated Tribes of Warren Springs, which many people don't know, our boundaries go all the way to Warren Springs. That's quite shocking. But for our community, a woman who is named Lisa Pearl Brizano, who's been missing since So those are, I know it's sombering, but after our, we had, as Commissioner Scholl mentioned, and Commissioner Schrader, we met with Grand Ron to talk about what's happening at the Willamette Falls, and such celebration in our connection with our Indigenous communities. This is a day, May 5th, that we recognize and mourn the missing persons of the Indigenous people. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners, for your reports. I'm just going to give a quick update on what we've been doing this week. There was an Aurora Aviation PAC Board meeting, of which I'm a member. I also met with newly appointed mayor of Oregon City, Denise McGriff. She has taken on that duty because the elected mayor resigned her position to move to Georgia to take care of family, and she, Rachel Lyles-Smith, will be missed. But Denise has stepped up and assumed those responsibilities, and we talked about a lot of issues that we are jointly involved in, and I look forward to a very cordial, good relationship with Oregon City. Yesterday, we've talked about our meeting with the Grand Ron, and it was a wonderful ceremony here in the boardroom, and then we exchanged gifts, and we went and we had lunch. And I had an opportunity to sit and talk with John George for quite a bit, one of their elected tribal members, and I learned a lot. Their elections are not so different than ours. He serves a three-year term. He is elected from a body of 6,000 members. He has to campaign for those, and he has rules about campaigning, just like we do. And I thought that was interesting. And it's part of their tribal governance that moves them forward on such projects as the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the development of the Blue Heron. He is, it is a paid position, of course, because they have to have that. And it was interesting, commissioners, they have the same issues in their tribal community as we do in ours. He says, as far as financing of their project down here, he says, 99.5% of the people are for, he says, there's about 10 people that always show up and complain, not unlike what we experience here, the same people complain. But he told me a lot about that. And he also has extended an invitation to us to go down to Grand Ron, and he will introduce us to their governance body, their museum, and a lot of activities they are involved in. I said, yes, I'm going. I hope we all go. They said we could have lunch. He says, we'll do everything for you. And, oh, we have that casino you might want to donate to. I said, so my lunch is not free? My lunch is not free? Yes, that's okay. Also, we have not forgotten about the abandoned RVs. Our staff has been working very hard and fast to identify them in Clackamas County, and this month they will be bringing forth issues at issues for us to consider how much money and how we're going to allocate that money to remove the abandoned RVs in Clackamas County. We have heard loud and clear from our constituents that they want that done. Yesterday was a marvelous opportunity for me to go down to Willamette Falls lochs. It was sunny. It was wonderful, and Congressman Kurt Schrader presented me with a $6.2 million check to do the repairs on the lochs. This is the first allocation coming through, the 7.5 from the state of Oregon will be following. So it was Commissioner Schrader, myself in the middle, and I immediately handed off the check to the US Army Corps of Engineer Colonel, who will be fixing it. And that man is very interesting. He grew up in Texas, and he says, East Texas, I've never seen anything like the majesty of this Willamette Falls. He's so excited. And boy, is he the right person to do this repairs. He's a West Point graduate with, with two degrees in engineering. He has taken on a master's degree. He has finished his master's in management engineering. And I says, my gosh, you're just the right person for this job. And he's, he's just so excited. He's just giddy to get going on this. And they explained to us all the repairs under the water they're going to do, and it's really quite tremendous. I was very happy to accept that from Congressman Schrader, our US Congress, and all others involved in making sure we got that earmark for this program. That's all I have. Commissioners, hearing no other testimony before us, this meeting is adjourned.